Tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter bi-weekly report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening, Exeter. Welcome to the September 16, 2024 Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting. I'd like to say good evening to my colleagues, respective staff, certainly those in attendance in the room and out in the hallway, and those watching from home. I'd like to start by introducing the board. To my right, Selectman Dan Chartren, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone, welcome.
Our Clerk, Selectwoman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, thank you for being here.
Selectwoman Nancy Belanger.
Good evening, everyone.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine, good evening.
Good evening.
Offline, we have our Assistant Town Manager, Melissa Roy, and our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel, good evening. And my name is Nico Papakostandis. The board met at 6:40 for two board interviews. We had one interviewee show. And now, without any further ado, I'd like to turn the podium over to Chief Pullen and our Town Clerk Andy Kohler for the swearing-in of Police Sergeant Taylor Sheehan. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us again. Thank you for Andy Kohler for being here tonight to help sort this. So we're here tonight to observe the swearing-in of Sergeant Taylor Sheehan. This was postponed. It was supposed to happen a little bit earlier, a couple months ago, but circumstances existed, and we are here today. That being said, he's been acting as a patrol sergeant since that time. He's been doing an excellent job. It wasn't that long ago that we swore him in as a police officer in Exeter, as you recall, but he came to us with prior experience from another agency. The position of a patrol sergeant, other than, I would say, the chief position, that is one of the most important positions for affecting change in any department. Having been there, and I see a lot of folks in the crowd that have been there or will be there soon someday, you are really the boots on the ground. You are there when upper level isn't there. You're responsible for two, three officers, if not more, at a time. You're also responsible for other towns coming into your town, and you have to make split-second decisions, and you have to have the respect of your people. And one thing that transfers over from the private sector is that ability to not only manage people but to be an effective leader. And Taylor comes to us with prior experience as a project manager and a CEO of his own construction company. You can tell just by the people that are here in attendance right now, his colleagues from multiple different agencies, that he has that quality about him, that leadership quality. There's even some people that have retired that have come back just to be witness here for this special day for Taylor, and that just speaks to who he is. It's very special. So we're fortunate to have had him come over, and now we're fortunate for him to take this next step. Obviously, fully trust him with being the eyes and ears when I'm not there, when other staff aren't there. So he's been doing an amazing job. He's already been tested with some pursuits and some things like that, and you've done great, and I know you continue to do great. So with that, we'll observe Clerk Kohler, give him his swearing-in.
Please, Taylor. Stand right here. Raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Taylor Sheehan.
I, Taylor Sheehan.
Of Brentwood, New Hampshire.
Of Brentwood, New Hampshire.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will bear faithful.
That I will bear faithful.
And true allegiance.
And true allegiance.
To the United States of America.
To the United States of America.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And the state of New Hampshire.
And will support the constitutions thereof.
And will support the constitutions thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Taylor Sheehan.
I, Taylor Sheehan.
Do solemnly and sincerely.
Do solemnly and sincerely.
Swear and affirm.
Swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent on me.
All the duties incumbent on me.
As sergeant.
As sergeant.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And enforce the laws.
And enforce the laws.
Of the state of New Hampshire.
Of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I might have to do the pinning again out there so he can catch her. Quick, Thor!
Well done. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief, good night.
Night, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
We all love to start our meetings with the pen and with the swearing, and it's a good way to start the night.
Mr. Dean, I'll say it again, I really enjoy that the Police Department now does that. I think it's good for all of us to see the swearing-in and folks at home watching on TV to see, in some cases, new officers that are being brought in and those promoted. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Starting that tradition. Next on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to come up for comment. If your comment is relative to something on the agenda, though, we do ask that you wait until that agenda item comes up. So I'll pause for a moment for public comment and look to see if there's anyone online. You should wait for the... Wait for the discussion item to come up. Thank you, appreciate that. That's okay. Before we move on to proclamations and recognitions, I would just like to say publicly a big thank you to our Town Moderator, Assistant Town Moderator, the Town Clerk's Office, all of the ballot clerks, and just all of the volunteers that came out last Tuesday to help during the election, the primary election on September 10. And I want to thank all of the voters that came out who were incredibly patient with the process, were very civil and respectful, and we were just really happy with the outcome of that. So thank you to all of those that volunteered, and thank you to all those that turned out. We do have a proclamation to read, but before I do that, it's too bad Chief Pullen left. Yesterday morning, the East Lodge, number 59, masons across the street here had a breakfast honoring the Police and Fire Departments of Exeter, respectively. They presented Chief Pullen and Deputy Chief McCain and Fire Chief Pizon, each with a Community Builders Award, which was very special. To get that recognition, there's a great turnout of the masons. Selectwoman Gilman and I were there, as were Mr. Dean and Ms. Roy. So I just want to congratulate both the Police and Fire Departments and recognize them, and also thank the masons for recognizing our departments. It was very special. Thank you.
Very much so.
And with that, we do have a proclamation to read for Constitution Week. And in our packet, there is a memo from the Daughters of the American Revolution for Immediate Release celebrating the Foundation of America, DAR, promoting Constitution Week. And with that, I'll read the proclamation. "Town of Exeter, New Hampshire, a proclamation in the year of our Lord 2024, Constitution Week, September 17 through 23, 2024. Whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Nico Papakostandis, Select Board Chair of the Town of Exeter, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week in the Town of Exeter. And I urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. And witness whereof, I have here, I have here on two set my hand and caused the seal of the Town of Exeter to be affixed this 16th day of September of the year of our Lord Thank you. Next on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from our regular meeting of September 3, 2024, and I would ask the board if there are any amendments or revisions.
No.
Okay, any down here? And seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Town of Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of September 3, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
So motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries 5-0. We have two appointments to take up this evening, the first of which was our interview downstairs, Don Cludier to the Budget Recommendations Committee for the 2024 budget year. I would entertain a motion to approve Don Cludier to the Budget Recommendations Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries 5-0. And as our second interviewee, Michael Drunzig, who has served on the Energy Committee previously and I think has already started coming to meetings, is interested in joining back up, I would entertain a motion to appoint Michael Drunzig to the Energy Committee. There are no terms on the committee, so...
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second and discussion?
Yeah.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. And then we have a request from the Conservation Commission. They have a voting member with a term to expire in April of 2027 who's interested in remaining with the commission, however, would better serve the board as an alternate. The Conservation and Sustainability Planner, Kristin Murphy, who's here this evening, has made a recommendation for the town to consider. And I first ask if there are any questions?
Just a comment, this is, this is a good switch.
Okay.
And it has been discussed at the Conservation Commission. It'll accommodate Kyle's needs, and Valerie's been doing an outstanding job as an alternate.
Okay, terrific. And for the record, Selectman Chartren is the Select Board Rep to the Conservation Commission.
Can I just add?
Please.
Because I was on there before. Kyle, thank you so much for all you've done, and you deserve the break if you even get a break. Valerie's been great.
So with that, I would entertain a motion to accept the resignation of voting member Kyle Welch and alternate member Valerie Fanger, reappointing Kyle Welch to an alternate position with a term to expire on April 2025, and reappointing Valerie Fanger to a voting member position with a term to expire on April 2027.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you to both Kyle and Valerie. And with that, we can move into our discussion items, the first of which is an E911 address change. And I think, Mr., we're going to take public comment in one moment. We have our Fire Department here. Good evening.
Good evening. Again, thank you for having me. We have one address change to make on Meeting Place Drive. A few months back, it came to our attention that the numbering on Meeting Place Drive was inconsistent with the E911 standards, and we needed to give a number to the new bank and to the water tower. So instead of trying to make more mistakes for the future, we decided renumbering that the street would be the best option. So we formulated numbers based on the E911 Commission standards, and they are, you have them in the packet in front of you. So essentially, if I could get a recommended motion to accept the new numbering of the buildings on Meeting Place Drive as proposed.
So Deputy Chief Fritz, if I may ask, with an election coming up very soon, the first week in November, would it be any risk to public safety if we defer making any decisions on this until after the election?
I don't think that would be a huge issue. Honestly, we discussed it this morning, and the election didn't even come into our thoughts when we made the decision. We've been working on this for a few months.
No, it's understandable. But I, and I think that, I think we'd all agree that just to eliminate any obstacles for folks to vote, that might be, that might be something for us to consider. But I do know we have members of the public who would wish to speak on this, and we'd like to have everybody come up to the mic once at a time to speak, and if you just say your name and address for the record?
My name is Robin.
Come right up to the microphone there, thank you. They need to hear you at home.
Don't bite. My name's Robin Petray. I live at 6 Meeting Place Drive, which is in the Meeting Place Commons in Exeter, which is the subject of this debacle, is what I call it. It's a long story, but where it started was, the bank went in. The bank faces Epping Road, was Epping Road before they subdivided. That's why it faces Epping Road. The road, the exit road now goes on to Meeting Place, and they became Two Meeting Place. We are four and six on the right-hand side and one and three on the left-hand side. But now they want to change it to give the bank three. Our number, the number before us will become 21, and our building will become 29, building across is 30 and 40, which they said has to do with footage. I don't know how that goes because our building's far more than 29 feet from the road. But at any rate, it's not like just changing an address, it's changing a lifestyle for a lot of people. We have a 62-plus building there, a lot of people with medical issues. They have medical supplies delivered, oxygen, their prescriptions. A lot of these people that are there don't see well, they don't hear well, a lot of them are inbound, they don't drive. So to get all these changes done, they don't use technology, computers and whatnot, to get all these things done is really cumbersome. It's not just, you know, we were just informed about this last week, and then to go forward. And because it is, my concern is this is a major election year. To me, it is a major election year. I am not going to miss out on it, changing addresses. My husband, I spoke to Jason about this, my husband has a medical device, a pacemaker, defibrillator. He has a monitor bedside that is by satellite and address, and it's not just, oh, I got to change the address, there's a lot more to it. You know, it's not, and there's a lot of circumstances, I think, in that development. I just didn't see, I know that it's an E911 system thing, it's been there for 14 years. They have no problem getting there. Emergency vehicles are there sometimes three and five times a day. I can attest to that, all you guys. But it's just, you know, and then I just, I didn't know if like HUD, there's a lot of people that have, the buildings themselves are low-income housing tax credit, a lot of apartments are assigned by number, and that's how they get a tax credit, the, you know, the owners. But it's also a lot of housing vouchers that go by not just your apartment number and your name, but by the building that it's in. You know, they assign it to you. So I just think that's more intense than just go into the post office, put in a change of address, and calling it a day. I don't think that that's the case, you know? I just, I know that sometimes they make exceptions. I had asked Jason, you know, if the water tower needs a number, can't you just give it double zero and call it a day? It's an inanimate object. It doesn't receive mail there, it doesn't send out mail there.
Robert Parish would be honored.
Exactly, exactly. So I just, those are questions, and, and so, because there's a vast amount of people, there's 200-plus people over there in those apartments, people started asking about a petition. I got names here, and I took it upon myself, instead of having them all combat you, I know that, you know, I spoke to Russ, I spoke to, can I speak to you?
Did you speak to him?
I know. I did, you know, and I spoke to quite a few people, actually, and, and Doug, and, and they all just advised me, I think when I spoke to Russ, I asked him about being put on the agenda, but like I said, we just found out about this on the 9th, there wasn't enough time, so he said, come and you can do public comment. I did have it all written, but I think I pretty much touched on, you know, what I have. There's medical services, everything that gets delivered there. I just think that, you know, at the very least, if they're, if they're set in stone, which I was told it wasn't set in stone, you guys ultimately get to make that last decision. So I'm pleading with you. Leave it alone. But anyways, if you can, and it is set in stone, I understand the 911 system, believe me. My husband has a pacemaker defibrillator, he's died on me. I definitely understand the system. But I also have faith in it that, you know, I see the ambulance, I see the fire trucks, I see everything coming there the way it is. So I'm just, my worry is even reversing it at this point could cause mishaps, you know? So, so that's my plea for not just myself, but for everybody over there. There's a lot of older people, there's a lot of, I don't mean to insult anybody, but there's a lot of people that aren't educated enough to understand what's going on. So I decided, you know, instead of them all bombarding you like I did Jason today, I was told I was loud, but I'm used to, my husband can't hear, and I live in a 62-plus building, they can't hear either. So I'm used to speaking a little bit louder, but, but that's it. And at the very least, if they can't do something about it, is at least pushing it forward, and can't we do this like after the first of the year? Or not an election year, tax, you know, and it's like, it's just, to me, it's just like boom, boom, boom. I don't think that it's been fully investigated to, to really, on our aspect. I know the E911 system, I know they probably got their crap together, excuse my language, but I think that as far as how it is becoming cumbersome on everybody else, I don't think that they really know the depth of that. That's my piece, and I'm sticking to it.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that. And you got it on the agenda.
Okay, so, so now will it be table to know? Because I was told a decision may be made right now. We want to be able to tell people, don't make changes yet.
So here's what we need to do. First, we need to, we need to ask if anybody else would like to speak to this, because everybody is welcome to speak.
Anybody else have anything they want to say?
We want to hear from, we want to hear from everybody?
They all agree with me.
Okay, that's, that's good.
I'm the mouth, you know, I'm called the mayor of Meeting Place.
Clearly.
Maybe I should run, huh? No?
Anybody can, you can go right up there.
Okay. Anybody else want to speak here?
Robin. Sally Ward, 72 Park Street.
I have the petition.
And I would just like to point out, I'm not weighing one in one way or the other on this, but I understand the concern because we had our numbers changed on Park Street. I think it was three years ago.
Six years ago. I have a friend that lives on Park Street, and she says...
Some time ago, but I just want to, I just want to point out to the board something to consider with the deliveries that she's mentioning. It did take, I would say, at least two years for the delivery services to get it straight. And it was okay for us because they would come to my house and say, is this 70, is this 22, is this 36? No. I knew where everybody was. But for people who are relying on delivery services for medical supplies, I think it is an issue.
It's crucial.
And I don't know where the button is to push to solve that immediately, but it is something to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That is one of my major points, it really is. It's like, I don't like to fight against the system, and they say you can't fight City Hall, but I'm trying, and...
And we're glad you're here.
Thank you. I do have all the names and the signatures of the petition, would you like to have it?
Sure, I'd love to have that. So what we can do for tonight...
Kind of a little bit of my spiel that I just said.
I'd like it all, we'll get it all on the record. Terrific, thank you very much.
The number is at the top right there, and the number is at the bottom.
All right, thank you, Robin. So, and again, if there's anybody else that would like to speak, can come up to the podium?
Just a couple more.
Go ahead, speak. This is my husband, Edward Petray. You come over here.
Maybe, yeah, that'd be great. If you could just state your name again for the record, so the stenographer gets it.
Don't get stressed out, we don't want no issue.
Well, she introduced me, so I'm Ed Petray, she's my better half.
Well, she introduced me, so I'm Ed Petre. She's my better half. It was an informative meeting this morning we had with the respective representatives from the town. Robin mentioned some notes on the delivery services, medical supplies, oxygen or whatever. Even with the medical support team and the law enforcement support team, they know where we are. I mean, like she said, been around for 14 years. It was also noted that you've got the immediate surrounding towns that are very familiar with us also. And I remember this morning, I brought the question up that, and I think you did too, there are other medical services, ambulances that are beyond that perimeter. Some of them may not be familiar. So I brought the point up, okay, does GPS come into play? Now, if you've got brand-new individuals, yet they're utilizing a GPS system or whatever, and it still signifies 6th Meeting Place Drive, but they come onto the property and now it says 29, what do you think that's going to do? They're going to kind of stand there and kind of go, wait a minute, where am I? What that also entails is the mail delivery services, not only the United States Postal Service, not the UPS system, not the FedEx, the Prime Amazon, and I could go on and on and on. If you've got a driver that's not familiar with the area, he's going to have an, an issue with delivering it to the proper destination. Now, my wife is from, she's got experience with the postal system, the Goffs, Goff's, Goff's Falls over in Manchester. She had a major position over there. She knows how the system works. If they can't deliver the mail to the respective address, I guess they end up bringing it back. Now, you're talking about social security checks, medical supplies, whatever the case may be. And I think the biggest thing is, all we're asking is, respectably, could all the property representatives take a stronger look at this and have a total understanding what this is all about and who is going to affect? That's all we're asking. But the biggest thing right now is the voting. It's a big year. So, and that's basically all I've got to say.
Well, I appreciate that. And every election is, is major. So we want everyone to be able to have access to voting. So I think that, you know, once we bring it back to the board, I think one thing to consider is deferring this request this evening. It will not impact public safety. We've heard from Deputy Chief Fritz. We can defer this through the election towards the end of the year. We can bring it back. And that will also allow time for more people to either write into the board. You can, you know, our email addresses are on the website. Folks can contact us. They can contact Mr. Dean. You won't feel as rushed as you have felt over the last week. And we'd love to hear any additional testimony. Obviously, we have your, your petition here. And it would allow, you know, would allow us to be able to investigate this a little bit further for next steps. But I think certainly deferring it through the election is a reasonable request. Mr. Chartran?
But the one thing, I'm sorry. The one thing that really upset us was that we were told that a Vesta was notified by certified notice or whatever. We were never brought it into that realm. And I had asked them, and Jason had, they had told us that Jason said somebody wrote, wrote off on it. They okayed it. I had been trying to get that name since last week and I still don't have a name of anybody writing off on being okay with it all happening. But what I would like to be, you have my name on there?
So this board, right, this board okay's it?
Okay. So anything that goes forward.
So you're here in front of us.
Could I please be notified? Because they are not, they don't notify us of both things.
You can, you can count on it. We will notify you when we take this up again.
Okay. So for right now, is it kind of sort of like tabled?
Right.
Sign the voluntary change of address form.
And that's in our packet.
It is.
Yeah.
Right.
The, the form that the Vesta representative signed is in our packet. So it's on, on the computer. I can, well, I'd give you my copy, but I didn't print it out.
Oh, okay, okay.
But that's not the decision.
No. So right now, things are, don't do any changes. It's kind of tabled until it goes forward? Is that my understanding?
Well, we, we need to make that decision, but we want to hear, we're still hearing from them.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I have a quick question.
Please.
For our fire department personnel. Have we ever had an address change that had this density of population? No. So we're breaking new ground here. And that's another reason to hold up.
Hold on, I'll...
Yeah. Yeah. And I was told that they've never reversed.
I want to hear from him. Thank you.
Justin Pies on Fire Chiefs. So, no, this is, I think Park Street was probably our largest change to date. That was a little bit more unique because we had numbers that were mixed with each other. That was like 20, 22, 46, you know, a little bit different. This is definitely a large change. This is the largest, I've, Jason's been on the committee now for a few years when I moved off of it, thankfully. So, but this is by far the largest change. And just if, if this change ever was to take place, just to put everybody's mind at ease a little bit maybe, hopefully, Jason will take care of changing almost all your addresses except for personal bills. So credit cards, mortgage, anything like that would have to be changed by the individual. Your voting, your mailing address, that's all done by us. So there's no reason to go to the post office, do change forms. Jason will have direct contact with the postmaster and they will literally take the paper when they walk out there for mail delivery. I am not trying to say this is the right decision. I'm just trying to say I want at least make you feel a little bit better about how that process actually takes place.
Does that happen with like ISP addresses and stuff too? Because try calling Xfinity and telling them that I have to change my address. Okay. They're going to take it as you moved, new plan, you lost your plan.
Xfinity is one of the, so all the public utilities, your gas, your electric, if you had a landline through a local company, that's all done by us. We change all those addresses on behalf of the tenants or owners.
So and that, that again comes into play like with my husband's device and his monitor. Nothing can be changed until I know it's being changed or...
Yeah. No, but it's not, it's a big change. It's affecting a lot of people.
It's a lot. It really is. It's a lot to absorb.
The water tower really threw a monkey wrench into it because by state regulations, we're required to have a, an address. And there is no addresses available. But that's something we can have. We've already had some conversations. Will give us more time to formulate some stuff at this table, which we're okay with that happening. So I think even till after the first of the year wouldn't be a big deal. I'm not speaking for, I'm not on the committee. So let me just say I'm not part of the E-911 committee.
Okay, we know what you mean.
From the fire department's perspective, we are okay with tableaus until after the first of the year.
Yeah. Well, I did do a little, you know, because I did a little bit of research and you can do a lot of research because the, you know, the technical world out there is huge as far as this like water towers and utility buildings and stuff like that. And then it doesn't happen very often, but, but it has happened where they have assigned them double zero. I know we have two water towers in Exeter?
Three.
So double zero or zero one or whatever. You only have two.
So it's true.
It's not going to be hard to recognize which one it is, you know?
We have to follow the standard. So what happens, we have to follow the New Hampshire addressing standard, which is a pretty boring novel if you want to read through it. Oh, you have a copy of it?
There's room for you too, right? There's room for them to work with you too.
It, I'm not going to get into the specifics legality of it and being culpable if we make changes that don't follow that guideline. And we, we know that that issue exists. It does put some increased liability on the town, knowing something that is out there that's addressed incorrectly.
Justification.
So that is part of it. However, let's just give us some time. Let's just come up with a plan.
It's a step.
I think, I think some members of the board want to weigh in, but I'd like to first ask if there's anybody else from the public that would like to speak?
Let me say.
And then you...
Just two more words and that's it.
Okay.
And I'll leave you alone. You know, if I had a magic wand, the easiest fix out of this would be water tower, like my wife was saying, zero or double zero. In sequence, the numbers on the left would fall right in line, one and three. On the right side, the bank has got number two, following in line with the evens being on the right side, four, six. And if there was any more development beyond that point, if it was towards our side, it would be eight. If it was towards the left side, it would be five. But I don't have a magic wand.
Let's hear, let's hear from our two other members of the public and then we're going to bring it back to the board. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jewel Strangos. I live at 6th Meeting Place. I'm in the senior building, which we were talking about. I, I find it a little misleading, no offense, Jason. But when I called about this, I was told not to worry about it. They're going to do all the notifying. And with the letter that we had, the notifying is down to utilities and things like that. The ordinary person, I mean, I've got, I tried to list what I would have to do. It's, it's the equivalent of moving. I have at least 15 places I have to call and get in touch with. We have to get in touch with social security, the registry, our health insurances, our vouchers, Medicare, Amazon, our apartment insurance, our car insurance. This is a lot to ask someone to do just like that. It's really, I, I really hope you'll really think about this before you do put all these people out. And, and a lot of us can't do it. There's a lot of people who are not able to do these things and are going to have to get help somehow. I just think it's a lot to ask people.
Thank you. We understand. Sir? Come right up to the microphone.
My name is Charles Ryan and I live at 6th Meeting Place Drive. I just want to tell you what happened on my, when I arrived. I've been there five years. Before I moved, I knew exactly which building and which apartment I was going to. And I went to my local post office in Maine, where I was coming from, and filled out their change of address form, right down to the apartment number and everything, well in advance of their requirement. And so I moved. And it took, I don't know how long it took for the, for the mail to start coming to my apartment number that I was living in, at 6th Meeting Place. But immediately, all the junk mail and some of the regular mail that had gone through Maine was sent to apartment 101 at 6th Meeting Place Drive where I never have lived. And I still feel, I feel sorry for whoever in that apartment. There's still mail coming in there five years later that was, that was sure to go in my name. So I just wanted to say how easily things can get screwed up.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Call the post office.
So we're going to bring it back to the board. Mr. Chartran, thank you for your patience.
Well, I, I think it's pretty clear that given the density of population that is involved with this change, we need to game this out really carefully. The election is definitely one reason to put it off, but just getting a process in place is the other reason. I will say that I have tried to find addresses in that meeting place and it's very difficult. It is not numbered the way it is supposed to be. Very similar to Park Street, which was out of order. It was a historical anomaly. This is also a historical anomaly that these addresses are this way. It's important to fix that because there's lots of folks that are getting confused right now. You're used to it, your delivery people are used to it, but that doesn't mean it's correct. So they're doing, let me finish. They're doing good work here and we need to be respectful of the work that the E-911 committee is doing. And you have been respectful, by the way.
I am. I'm going to try to be, I have to be.
Let me finish. So I think we need to give this not like weeks, but maybe months to game plan out how we're going to do this, given that we've never had this density of population affected by one of these changes before. Thank you.
And the disabilities of a lot of the people.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Selectman Chartran. Any conversation down here?
I just, could you clarify the notification process?
We notified the property owners.
Yes.
Which in this case was a Vesta.
Right.
And that's, that's who we dealt with.
And then a Vesta would...
And the owner of the bank, all of which signed their voluntary change of address forms. And I don't have...
Was that Maine? The Maine of Vesta or Exeter of Vesta?
Maine.
Ma'am, we, we have to let him answer the selectwoman Blanche's question. Thank you.
So that's where my communication or our communication goes?
And then it's up to a Vesta, correct, to reach out to their tenants?
Yes.
Okay.
And they didn't. We weren't, we weren't told in the meeting.
As part of this process, if we decide tonight to defer it, is there a way, you know, we've done this like during the Siphon Project when we went out to Butters. Can we put together like a small team to go out and maybe meet with the residents and sort of walk them through?
They did this.
Sure, we did that this morning.
They did it this morning.
Okay. And maybe, maybe again would be a good idea. Go ahead.
I just had one more follow-up if I could.
Please, of course.
Are you still in contact with the property owners?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't know if this is possible to throw a suggestion out there that when this happens, I'm assuming it happens, I don't know, is it possible for them to put a sign up that says formally with their old number or something for a little bit? Just for delivery people, I don't know if we can even suggest it. I'm just throwing it out there.
No. If, if, if it gets approved, they would be required to renumber the buildings per the standard.
Yes. But I'm saying maybe they could put some kind of notice on their buildings that says this was formerly, formerly two, just so that maybe delivery people or whatever has that for a while.
We've even volunteered to make those forms.
See, of course you have. Thank you. Thank you so much.
They were very helpful this morning. They were.
Deputy Chief, would, would January 2025 allow you enough time to?
I'm, I'm sure it would.
Okay. Is that a reasonable time?
I think it is, yes.
Maybe even not to make a decision, but bring it back? Okay. Does that work?
Yeah.
Then I, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Selectman.
Yeah. I think in the meantime, it would be really good communication and information for us to have if the Subcommittee of E-911 or some group went out to the community and talked to them about the services that they get that are so timely that they can't wait for the mail to change, you know, the address to change. And just for, for your knowledge that the GPS coordinate system is also changed by us at the time, so.
But yes, to, to, for the residents.
That's for the future, yeah.
Notified, not just a Vesta, because communication with a Vesta and the residents just is non-existent. You know what I mean?
I think you're asking them to notify you instead of Vesta and I don't think that can happen.
No, I know they have to notify them.
I don't think we are designed to notify you separately, are we? Do we have?
No, well, I put the petition in, so I would at least like an answer to that.
I think our assistant manager is gonna...
Come on up, Melissa.
Should at least be. I, I know that they don't have to notify everybody, but I did put the petition, my name and number is there. So at least to know what direction, I know, like you're saying, looking at it at, you know, January 25th, 2025. But if anything transpires in between that, just not to be blind. So on the next day, January 26th, it's like, okay.
No, I already told you, we're going to give you, we're going to give you plenty of notice. Assistant manager town, Assistant Town Manager Melissa Roy, forgive me.
We may actually be saying the same thing. So what my question was, was did you want this to come back for discussion in January? Or were you looking to have it be effective in January? Because I think like Dan was saying, that we need a few months, make sure communication is happening and all of those things. So if you were to vote today, and I'm not saying that you should, to make it effective January first.
No, I think, I think it's to allow, first of all, it, it allows folks to be able to vote in November. It allows folks to continue to have conversation within the town departments. We can do a little bit more due diligence. Unless I misinterpreted the rest of the board, I think we'd like to bring it back no, no sooner than January for additional discussion and to see where we've, did I get that?
You've got, you're reading me exactly right. I would vote no tonight if there was a motion.
So if we...
But I want to vote yes because this needs to be fixed.
So I would like to entertain a motion if I, did you have anything else?
No, thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion to defer accepting the new numbering of the buildings on Meeting Place Drive as recommended by the E-911 committee until further review and setting up a date in January 2025 for the board to review again.
Can I throw study of, study implementing this decision in that motion? That's really what we're talking about.
Right.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't know.
You want to take another stab?
I would drop my motion.
Scratch that.
Yeah.
I'd entertain a motion to defer accepting the new numbering of the buildings on Meeting Place Drive as listed in the memo from the E-911 committee until further studying can be done and a review by the select board no sooner than January 2025 before implementation.
So moved.
And I'll second that.
So will that...
One moment, one moment, one moment, one moment. Thank you. There's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries five zero. This is deferred until further review in January 2025. Last word.
Does that mean that we will, it'll be on the agenda in January, we'll be notified?
And you'll be notified. I promised you.
I promise that I'll be to more meetings.
Okay, I hope so. We get lonely here. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for hearing us. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, all of you.
It's a step, it's a step.
That's right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I try.
We defer. Not taken.
I didn't have that one written, no.
No, no, I, I just...
Oh, right, chief.
I was trying to be clear about what I was thinking.
So our next agenda item, I think, involves Fire Chief Pizon.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Good night.
Sharon, good night.
Joanna, I'll give you this after the meeting. Joanna?
Thank you. Chief Pizon, how are you?
Hi, thank you for having me. I think that most people are probably aware that Exeter Hospital or the new owners of Exeter Hospital came out with pretty alarming news last week that caught a lot of us off guard. So I wanted to come tonight and just provide a quick update to where we were and where we are and hopefully where we're going. Where we're going is still a little cloudy, but I'll try to provide some insight in where we're heading. So Monday, September 9th, I was getting ready to leave work and I got a call from one of our medics and said, hey, can you hang around? I just heard some news at the hospital that's, you're going to want to hear about. So I waited and the paramedics for the advanced life support team, which is Exeter ALS, the white suburban you'll see coming through town quite a bit, that they were told that they were going to be dissolved as of September 20th. And that caught everybody off guard. That is, to put it in perspective, I had reached out to the individual overseas, Laura Chopoulos, who oversees ALS. They get called out over 3,000 times a year. So put that in perspective. We do about 2,500 ambulance calls this year and Exeter will probably do about 2,600 patient contacts. We run a little bit differently than they do. They get called out and get canceled a lot, but still 3,000 callouts a year. That's significant. The official notification didn't come until mid-morning the following day when I received a call from one of the vice presidents at Exeter Hospital notifying us that they were indeed terminating the, the service as of September 20th. I shared my thoughts on it. I'm sure they probably thought they were correct, but I was honest and to the point because it was, it was big news. And I think that, for lack of a better term, I call it the classic rug bowl, because that's what I felt like it was. And I know that we don't use ALS very much in Exeter. From January 1st, 2023 to today, we've used ALS nine times in Exeter. Some of those, we had our own companies tied up someplace else. The one, the one skill that ALS paramedics have that we do not have with our service with paramedics is something called rapid sequence intubation. I'm going to spare you the details. If you want to look it up or have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. That is, that it requires some drug administration and then put in the airway breathing tube to be intubated, usually around a head injury or like a stroke somewhere where people are combatant. So I took a look at our contract. I was curious because we all have contracts with ALS and there was a 90-day clause in our contract that said that either party could cancel with 90 days' written notice. So I handed that information over to Chief Warren in East Kingston and he engaged counsel, executive counselor Stevens with the information. And she pushed that forward to the Attorney General's Office and the Department of Justice. And I believe the AG's office was caught off guard as well with all this. So, so the executive counselor, counsel, executive counselor Stevens met with the Attorney General's Office, the Attorney General's Office in turn met with Beth Israel's Leahy's own attorneys, and they decided that they would honor the 90 days, which pushed it out to December 20th. So right now, we're looking at a December 20th date of when ALS will still be dissolved. I spoke to Chief Warren this morning. I had some questions for him. And without trying to provide a bunch of details because I can't confirm the accuracy of those, there is discussions to suspend this indefinitely. I believe some of the conversations revolved around the $375 million that Beth Israel Leahy had said they would invest in community, community hospital-type programs. And they believe that the ALS service is truly exactly that. So I think they're trying to use some of that money for that, but that is so early and I don't want to try to give anybody false hopes. But that's where we are today. At least right now, we have a 90-day window. Obviously, the concern for us was the fact that we are surrounded with continuous contiguous communities outside of our East Hampton and North Hampton, but most of the other communities that touch us do not have paramedics on staff. And the obvious concern was, what does that mean for the Exeter Fire Department? So I've had a lot of conversations. I've been involved in a lot of group chats over the last week. It's no secret to anybody around us that we're a busy organization and they understand and they can appreciate the fact that we're not going to be available to cover 3,000 callouts a year. Now, in fairness, that could be all the way to Deerfield. ALS covers a very, very geographically speaking large area. We would be looking at communities that probably touch us. In saying that, however, if an ambulance is coming through Exeter that does not have a paramedic on it, our job is to still help people. So if we have a paramedic available, we will meet them someplace and do an intercept in town and provide a level of service to ensure that the outcome of that patient is best as possible. I don't expect it to be significant. Honestly, I, I think there's so much conversations taking place along the 125 corridor right now that regardless of what happens with ALS, I think this is a ginormous wake-up call for all those agencies. And they are starting to prepare plans, which I'll be part of, our department will be part of, coming up with a solid plan for the future that maybe relies more on the municipalities and not the hospital. So just in a nutshell, I want to at least provide some insight of what was going on. And I want to answer questions if anybody had any.
Sure. And I appreciate your update and I'm thankful that you and others in neighboring communities took the efforts that you took. And sometimes it's necessary to be current and blunt. So, and I know you, you use that when it's appropriate. But Selectwoman Bellinger?
Could you just elaborate a little bit more on what you meant by intercept?
Yeah, so intercept, so you see ALS is truly an intercept service. They don't rely on, they don't have an ambulance. So how ALS, how they generate revenue is through getting on an ambulance. So if they respond to Deerfield and they showed up on scene and they're like, no, we're all set, we don't need ALS, they drove to Deerfield and have no way to bill for that at all currently. So the only way ALS bills is when they call for a paramedic out to a community that does, that needs a paramedic. When they get on the ambulance and transport, they're intercepting with an ambulance. So they call it an intercept.
Okay, thank you. And so we don't know if, if, I guess we'll know further down the road if they do discontinue this. If they do on December 20th, then we might have a better understanding of how it's going to affect Exeter and our surrounding communities because that is a scary part of this.
Yeah, I mean, it is a scary part, but I want to rest assured that in Exeter, we have a robust staff of paramedics. So we have a paramedic working at least one 24/7, 365 days a year.
Right. But we could get called out and help a community.
We could. Those are tough decisions that I'll be having to make on what calls we will go to. Because that's going to be how it's going to have to go, is I'm going to have to make decisions on when we say yes and when we say no. And that's not a position I really want to be in, but it's the one I'm going to put in, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You, Selectwoman Gill.
Yeah, yes, thank you, Chief. We are a part of the mutual aid group. The surrounding towns come to our aid if we need it. We go to their aid if they need it, depending on the, you know, size of the incident that's occurring. Do we not do that with paramedics? Or do we refrain?
So the state in New Hampshire does not recognize EMS as an essential service. So, so the mutual aid agreements we have in place now are actually...
Can I write that down for a pen?
So something to bring up at the State House perhaps, since we're trying to get that changed. So our mutual aid agreements are based on fire response. EMS is not part of those plans. We do have a mass casualty incident, an MCI plan, that's been adopted by the City Coach Chiefs, that for much larger events, it had to be like, Exeter Hospital a few years ago, I guess it was quite a while ago, had like an unknown odor in one of the, in the OR and a lot of people were out. We had a makeshift ER setup outdoors. That would be a situation where we might declare a mass casualty. You might bring in ambulances from other communities.
Dominos the fact.
It was.
Did you have any other questions?
No, I thank you for that piece of information because yeah, like this is...
I made sure I did my due diligence of reaching out to the state to make sure I was, I had a lot of questions for a lot of people last week, so.
I will follow up on this.
Thank you.
I'll be more than happy to help any way I can, so.
Selectwoman Cowan?
No, I don't have any questions. I just continue my incredible frustration with how we fund things in the state and what priority is given to what. So thank you so much for all of the work that I'm sure you and your team have put in. And we hope to do everything we can to not have you in the position of deciding.
I appreciate that.
Because this is...
That's wrong.
Wild.
Just reiterating for clarification, we use this ALS service nine times since the beginning of 2023.
Correct.
So the impact on Exeter is minimal in terms of our residents getting proper levels of service. But it impacts us because we may be in demand.
Correct.
If that goes away.
That's, and that would be truly where it would impact the town of Exeter and the people in Exeter.
And our resources would be potentially stretched thinner, or you would have to say no more often.
Correct.
Okay, good. So we've got that clarification. And then I'll just join Selectwoman Cowan by saying this state has traditionally over-relied on not-for-profits to provide services that are provided by governments in other states. And that's coming home to roost. This is a not-for-profit that, this is not sustainable. They've been doing it for how many years?
I believe the number was 34.
So they've been doing this for three and a half decades almost.
Correct.
That's incredible service to these communities by a not-for-profit. And new ownership has come in and said, this is not sustainable. I, I believe. They have to live up to the terms of their agreement. And it sounds like the Attorney General has helped them to realize that. But yeah, there's no free lunch. You know, this, these are services that are provided by governments in other states, correct? Is there this kind of reliance on not-for-profits in other states?
I can't speak to that. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Fair question.
I suspect that we are over-relying on our not-for-profits, which we have done historically.
And the paramedics, the paramedic intercept model definitely exists in other states, especially Massachusetts. Massachusetts out of Lawrence General, for example, they have their paramedics that respond to their neighboring communities as well. And I, I've had a lot of conversations and nobody was opposed to paying flat fees for whether they have to show up or if they get canceled halfway, like providing other opportunities to help maintain the sustainability of that organization and that particular, you know, ALS is an important aspect of what they provide. And they never had a chance to even enter into those discussions. And I think that's hopefully what we're going to see now is maybe there'll be a way to make that a viable entity that can at least break even and maybe not have to lose it. That'd be a...
I apologize for my assumption.
No, that's okay.
It sounds like there are models in other states for not-for-profits providing this service.
I don't, can't speak for what Lawrence General's, if they're for profit or not. I'm just giving you an example. The actual intercept model exists in many other locations for paramedic intercepts.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate you coming here tonight.
Yeah, no problem.
And nine people is not nothing. I mean, that's...
Yeah, no.
It's nine lives.
Yeah.
But we can probably figure that out.
Yeah, I mean, I, oh, I could tell you like one of the ones we had about eight, not within the last year, was we only had one person at the fire station and we had a call come in. So he called ALS because he needed some help and they were, they came and helped him. So it's very, I mean, if the RSI, we're already starting to investigate becoming credentialed in RSI ourselves. It's, it's, when it first happened in New Hampshire, it was very challenging to become RSI credentialed.
What is RSI? I'm sorry.
Okay. So the rapid sequence intubation includes, yeah, it's paralytics and drugs to sedate you. So it paralyzes you, so you lose your gag reflex. And it sedates you, so you obviously have no, you don't know, you don't know what's happening.
That wasn't one of those tools that you came in that we...
It was. So that laryngoscope, the video laryngoscopes that, that Riverwoods had donated to us.
Yes, thank you.
Yep. That those laryngoscopes are the tool we would use in intubating somebody. And in a case, the hard part with head injuries is you don't lose your gag reflex. So strokes, head injuries, that's the main reason. We've had some pretty significant head injuries over the years where we needed somebody to come in to help because the person's doing potentially harm, never mind to the people that are trying to provide care, but to themselves. Moving around, you're moving your neck around. So the idea is to, and it is the gold standard. So the idea of intubation is to protect your airway. So, because I can almost guarantee you, if you were to aspirate and it gets into your lungs, you're going to have aspiration pneumonia. So now you're recovering from an injury on top of the fact you've had pneumonia as well. So the idea is you want to protect that airway as soon as possible. So there's no chance for that to ever happen. And you can't do that without the right medications for somebody who's got a gag reflex. Sorry to give you so many details.
No, it's fine. We have an retired doctor back there like...
And he's not to confirm anything. So that's reassuring.
Well, there you go.
Yeah.
All right. So I misspoke.
Thank you.
They're not probably, okay.
But it is a historic fact that the state over relies on its not-for-profits.
We have, we had quite a few, so, yeah.
Well, and I guess my, sorry, my last question is if there is any way for us to be helpful in advocating with, you know, one of the things that I've been thinking a lot about, especially since this news broke, you know, one of the things that I had initially been worried about was the maternity ward, like the labor and delivery piece being shut. And then there's this news and then there's all of the other offices that seem like they're closing. So I don't know about, you know, what, what the appropriate reliance on you all in terms of advocacy lessons that we can use with the hospital. But this is, I mean, this is so concerning to us.
I mean, I grew up in Hampton and I watched over the years, I thought how awesome it was that Exeter Hospital was able to expand and be really integrated into the community. My, both my children, my, through their teenage years, they went to the pediatric dentistry office that's going to be closed. And I just, it was really neat. You can go through town and all these different businesses, offices and different care centers you can go to for different types of procedures and doctors. And I just felt like it's, we've gone in the, rapidly in the wrong direction. So, sorry, that's my opinion.
No, I, I agree with Molly. That's a concern of mine is maternity is going to be gone. And we don't have a lot of public transportation. Imagine that, you'll be delivering babies too, so.
Well, we do that, so that's okay.
Or more. How's this?
Everybody's going to have a home birth. I know. It's just wild.
It will revert.
Yeah.
Sorry.
And there is a coalition of managers and administrators that are deep into this right now and are working through the channels to get proper notice with the AG and proper audience. So I think we do have a conduit there.
Great.
And all I was going to say is please come back to the select board meetings when you've got updates so that we can, we can get this out.
Absolutely will.
And then as Selectwoman Cowan said, if there's anything as a board that we can do to assist you and the other, our neighboring towns, let us know.
I appreciate that very much and I will be back.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
So we're going to, we're going to pivot to something a little bit more enlightening and enjoyable. We have our tree committee here this evening. And they're, they'd like to give a presentation of the work that they've been doing since they were last here. And Kristin, you have a slideshow?
I do, but is it Gabe that's out back?
Gabe is out back, yeah.
I'm not supposed to touch.
Okay.
Hi.
There it is.
Is it just me?
Yeah.
We have a side table.
And Kristin.
Yeah.
And Gabe.
There's not anyone.
Gabe, the TV guy. God love him.
Gabe, the TV guy.
Oh.
God love him.
Gabe Perez.
Good evening.
Well, hi there. How are you? Eileen Flockhart. Uh, the tree committee would like to sort of give you a little review of what we've been up to, and
And I would just add, we want to bring joy to the meeting.
Thank you.
Joy and happiness.
We placed you on the agenda appropriately to balance out, because the budget's next, so.
If we go to the partners, I looked at this page, and it's similar to what we had last year, and you know, sometimes you have partners for the baseball team or something. These folks on this page, they get out, down and dirty, they work with us, they do stuff that you wouldn't believe, and everybody, from Unitil Helping Plant, the bunch of trees down on Holland Way, and the schools doing stuff, they, they did, wrote their own grants and got their own trees, and we get information, and Greg Beeson at, at Parks and Rec, and the muscle power that comes from, from any of these folks. So you look at partners and you go, yes, if you want partners, you want these folks. And they've been absolutely wonderful. Um, we've had donations, and we've had private donations of our magical mystical little elm trees from Steve and, and other folks, and help planting them around, and by the time they got planted, you would think we were planting a member of their family, you know? So it, it's been a wonderful bunch of team players to be able to do what we do, so it, it makes it, makes it a lot of fun. And Sally's gonna take off.
Sally Ward, um, I, I think it's, one of our goals is to summarize what we've done to, and to express our appreciation for your support for, for our work, and our work is very, um, well, it's a really good committee to be on. It's very positive and forward-thinking. And, uh, I'm just going to review quickly some of the accomplishments over the, the last year, since the last time we met with, with you about our report. So we've continued our monthly meetings, and, uh, our partners come, come to those meetings as well. Um, we have regular posts, uh, social media posts, principally through the Facebook page, to try to get the word out about what we're doing and to, um, inform or reinforce to the community how important, uh, trees are for the health of the community. Um, we have multiple events that we, we host annually, such as the Arbor Day celebration, and we participate every year in the AILY Festival, et cetera. So we're, we're trying to get the word out and be out in the community. The most important thing, um, that I want to talk about is the trees, of course. And since last year, when we, we met with you, we had a goal of, uh, of, of eight trees. We've already surpassed that, and by the end of this year, we will be at least to twelve newly planted trees. And that, that, um, that relies extensively on our partners. Uh, DPW does the, they, they do the heavy lift in terms of planting the trees. We plan in the committee, and we contact, um, donors, and we contact Stratum Circle Nursery, that's another excellent partner of ours, but DPW makes it possible for us to get the trees in the ground. And, um, so in addition to the planting of the trees, we also have maintenance of trees, which includes watering and pruning. And unfortunately, like anything else, uh, it's not a once and done, so sometimes the trees need extra help, sometimes they have to be relocated. So that's all part of our maintenance work, which we've been doing this year. Um, so, uh, we also have this year a new, uh, initiative, which is a tree inventory, and that, we'll talk a little bit more about that later, but basically that is an app that Rockingham, um, Rockingham Planning Commission has helped us figure that out. And so we on the committee are, are working with the app now until we get it nailed down how to do it, and then we're going to recruit, um, recruit volunteers from, from the town to help us, so that they can go on, on their own phones and, and, and map out maps in different parts of town. And so our goal is to have a tree, an accurate tree inventory, at least for the, the center part of town. Um, and we've also identified this year sites for the future planting, so we're looking ahead into next year, the rest of this year, and also next year. And we have, uh, located sites, and we've also talked about, um, increasing the diversity of trees. We're, we're particularly interested in native trees, and some of the trees, most of the trees that we planted this year are native trees, and, um, we also want to increase the diversity of the coverage. So we've identified sites this year, and we've identified species, and we've had fun doing it.
Sally, I think
Yeah, I'm sorry, before you go to your next slide, can you just explain what your acronyms are?
Expect
The E O Y?
Oh, end of year.
Yeah, I just wanted, I know, it's silly, but
I had the same question.
And the ISA, I have to do it, it's, um, what is ISA specialist?
What is ISA specialist?
That's the thing that Jay does.
International Society of Arborists.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, we have membership in that this year, too. Forgot to mention that.
I looked at E O Y, and I was like, what?
You've reached your goal, and I'm gone by it, but.
So here's the fun part. Um, we have a great time not only connecting with people, making decisions about where we're going to plant trees, whether it's the fifteen little elms that we got from the Elm Society, um, that are clones of Herbie, the elm tree from Maine, and some of the tags are still on there, you can read the story. Um, when we're doing this, you know, people go by, like, what are you doing? Who are you? You know? And we say, well, I'm glad you asked. Come right over here, let me show you this tree. Um, the, the tree in the center there is at Gleneren Lane, and we had almost figured out where to put all the fifteen trees, and Steve bumped into some woman in RJ's, and she said, we'd kind of like a tree, how do you get one of those trees? And he said, well, where do you live? And so we went down to Gleneren Lane, and there were like, I don't know, five or six or seven houses, and we finally worked on where it's going to be safe for the snowplow, it's not going to get killed, because it did look kind of fragile. And this one, woman says, well, I sit out and I read every morning, and I look out my window, so I'll keep an eye on it.
Where did it go on Gleneren Lane?
Well, it's like a little cul-de-sac, and it's right smack in the middle.
Did it go in the middle of the?
Yeah, yeah. It's a little off-center of the middle, so it's safe from the
Yeah, that's awesome.
pile of snow.
It's a significant, uh, roundabout there.
Yeah, yeah, it's really cute, and, and everybody's kind of keeping an eye on it, because you sort of want to cheer trees that size on.
Adopt a tree.
And what kind of tree was it?
One of the elms, one of the Herbie elms.
Awesome.
Um, and so we had a, uh, the trees that, the most, the most entertaining part is when the kids get involved. And this is the green team at Lincoln Street School under, uh, Keith Schmidt and, and Katie Pepino there. And those kids helped to write a grant, they got a grant for fifteen hundred dollars, they connected with AJ Dupuy from the forestry, they provided two really terrific-looking trees, and then the kids got, once again, down and dirty. I think you were with us last year, Dan, when we got down and dirty, right? And, uh, so that's the kind of stuff where the kids, we've planted several trees at Lincoln Street, so they can watch them. There's one by the Buddy Bench, which is probably, we planted during COVID
Mm-hmm.
that's gotten a good bit bigger, you know? So it, it's a little memory for the kids as they see things, but they, they write poems, they read stories, you know, and it's, it's just, you know, nice connection for the reason that you want trees. Um, so, and I got to tell you, the, the Public Works folks take such pride in staking, and they have their own system of tying the trees, and they use this, you could use that, but I, I got this stuff, well, and it's like Steve's collars for the trees, that you can sort of see it at the bottom there. It's some, what is it, piping insulation? I don't know what it is.
Conduit.
Conduit, right?
Conduit.
So I bought a big, long thing of it and chopped it up and sliced it down and wrapped it around the tree to protect the tree, and, you know, it's, it's kind of the New Hampshire way, isn't it? You know, we kind of, New Hampshire thing. Um, but everybody sort of takes a, a nice, and on the far right in the middle is Kevin Breen, who's on our committee, is an arborist. When it came time to pick up the trees, Steve went back and forth to Keene, which is on the way to nowhere. Kevin goes out and back, I think twice, and came back with the trees, and like, sure, I can go get the trees, like, God love you. Um, so, I mean, that's the, the reason, that's one of the, I mean, we know the trees are important, and it's good for everything, but it's also good for the community to get involved and see that. And, uh, and when, when we have, you know, events like a table at the, outside the election in the atrium, and people come by, and we got fourteen people signed up to do the tree inventory, just learning about it. So, um, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kristen to tell us about the tree inventory.
Thank you. Here, I'll stand over here, so. So I'm really excited to share this because, as you know, the tree committee came before you for an increased budget last year. Um, some of that included equipment that you saw on the accomplishment slide, the chipper and the water tank, which is under construction now. I think, do I have that backwards? No, that's right.
No, that's right.
Um, and then it was ten thousand dollars set aside for the tree inventory. Um, we were able to get a contract with Rockingham Planning Commission, and they built this fantastic inventory. And what I, one of my huge peeves is documents that just sit on the shelf, and you can't do anything with them, and this really gets us away from that. Um, the tree inventory, they, Dakota Bailey, who unfortunately now is leaving RPC, um, created this fantastic app, it, it's all Survey 123, it's an ArcGIS-based software. You don't need to pay any money for the app, you can download it on your phone, you can look at it on your computer, um, and it's all free and hosted at RP, Rockingham Planning Commission. But it's just simple questions. You walk along the street, you, you know, collect a point where you are and answer some questions about the tree. Is it conflicting with wires? Does it need pruning? What species is it? How, how big is it? Um, and, and all of that information is really key and important information for us to manage the trees that we have. And so, you know, for example, how tall is it? Public Works has to make a decision. Do we need to contract out trimming, or can we reach it? You know, do we, um, if there's wires conflicting, do we need, do we need assistance with that? Um, the other really key thing about this is, um, this will be, um, hosted web, uh, GIS-based data, and we created, uh, or Dakota created a dashboard. And so this dashboard is something that, at any time, the public can go to this, so can Public Works, and say, which trees in the community need to be pruned? And they can sort, um, this is a little early, because we don't have a lot of trees populated, but they could click on, um, maintenance needs, and they could print out a list of those trees in town that need some pruning. So when they, you know, they're ready to send a crew out, they know where to go. Um, and it's set up so that they can also, as they prune it, they can update the data that we have there, so that the tree inventory will reflect that the tree has been maintained. Um, and so, uh, the other thing, the public side of this, and the interesting side, is you can go to any of these trees and learn fun facts about the individual trees, you can learn, you know, what, you know, how quickly they grow, how much sun they need, um, and a whole host of other information. So I'm really excited that we can roll this out. Uh, I think it will be very useful once we get all the data in there. It looks a little, a little dull now, but trust me, it'll be exciting. Um, I did create a webpage on the town's website that has a training guide and all the information that you need to participate. Um, as Eileen mentioned, the tree committee had a table at the primary, and we got a number of volunteers interested in signing up. We'll get them trained up and out on the streets collecting data. It's very simple, thanks to, you know, Google Photo, you really don't even need to know much about trees to be able to identify it. So, um, we'll be providing either individual training, or if we get a whole host of people that are available at the same time, I can do one big group training. Um, so, please spread the word, we're looking for volunteers for that effort. Um, and at the end of the day, we'll have something that's not going to sit on the shelf, it's something that can be updated moving forward. I think, yeah.
That was the beauty of this. We have an inventory that was done in 2017, which gave us some information that we had a lot of maple trees, um, but not a whole lot that we could use to say, okay, where are we going to move? What, what areas have sort of a tree desert, and what can we do about that? Um, so we're looking kind of at our goals for the coming year, and we're hoping to plant a good ten to twelve more trees, maybe we can do more than that. Um, we want to continue labeling trees as a part of an educational opportunity for people to notice new varieties and, uh, recognize them as they walk by, um, working on the inventory. Uh, I guess what we want to say in terms of what we do going forward is that trees are a little like kids, okay? You get them in the ground, you think, "Did it," you know? And then you find out, ah, there's something wrong, it's tilting, it's not, we planted two little elms by the library, and then somebody mentioned that, you know, they're going to get really big, and all of a sudden you want to look out the window at the library, and it's going to be a problem. So we're going to be moving those two little elms and putting in a flowering dogwood or something. But then there are other issues that'll come up. Trees need to be pruned, and if you really want to do the trees right, you got to pay attention to them. And so I think more than anything, we really want to say, whether it's ten to twelve trees, or whatever it is, we want trees to be successful, we want them to thrive, we want to keep watching the ones that we've planted. We can't just say, okay, you're on your own, kid. Um, and then to continue to educate people about, don't pile mulch around the tree and kill it, please. You know, there are ways to do it that really, you know, we, we can drive down Lincoln Street, we know there's trees that are dying there, and that's not okay, you know? So we don't, we don't want to see that happen. I want to say, oh, those were the Exeter Tree Committee put those in, but, eh, they're kind of dead, you know? Um, so that's, we're, we're really looking for successful kids, successful trees, and as we get better at it, as we can expand more, we don't want to bite off more than we can chew, but we want, we want to make it work. And, uh, so we've had a lot of fabulous people working hard with us, and we couldn't do it without that. So, um, I feel very blessed to be sitting here telling you all this, because it's, uh, it's a lot of fun, and it's rewarding to look around and say, huh, those trees got a little bigger. Look at Lincoln Street trees, they look pretty darn good, you know? And we remember that 2020, when we were standing ten feet apart with microphones.
Masks, yeah.
But the fire trucks came in that day.
And this reminds me, this slide reminds me to point out that we have continued our work with, um, the Arbor
Tree City USA.
With Tree City USA. And so we have applied for every year, we have the initial designation as Tree City, but we also have been able to get growth awards, which is showing that we are continuing our work and adding to it. Every year we're growing the organization as well as growing the trees.
So I have a question. Kristen, or Gabe, is he the one that goes back to slides? It's, it's the one that, about the app. It's a silly question, but I'm going to ask it.
It's not a silly question.
So if I loaded the app, I can bring my sewing tape measure, right?
Yeah.
And, and go around and, and do the, the, you know, around the tree.
Yep.
How do you determine the height?
Yeah, that's a good question.
I mean, that's not going to be easy.
They were saying, when, when, what was his name?
It's very loose.
Dakota.
You have to use geometry.
Well, and that's what I want to know for myself, but I also want the public to know if they want to do this, that if they can't determine the height, it's okay to leave that blank and somebody
It's very broad, it's over twenty, under ten. I mean, it's very broad, the designations, choices you have to
Okay.
It's, it's not an exact
It's not an exact science.
How many Nancy's?
How many Nancy's? I can figure that out. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And then if I could just follow up one more, and it's more about the future planning of budget and things like that. We're doing all this wonderful work, which I'm so glad you're all doing. I mean, it brings me back to looking at our history and all the elms that were wiped out. Um, and I was so glad that you all started this and that you stuck with it, and you're doing such great work. So what do we do about maintenance? DPW is helping out with planting. And I was so glad that you all started this and that you've stuck with it and you're doing such great work. So what do we do about maintenance? DPW is helping out with planting, but we're going to have some trees that we're planting on public property that we have to maintain. So do we have a kind of a future look ahead on, on that? Is it Parks and Rec because they mow and maintain? Are they the ones that would be responsible for the tree maintenance?
I think it would be DPW.
It would still be DPW.
And they would still do it. And we have a $25,000 line item in the highway budget right now for tree maintenance.
So we'll need to look at.
So that's the number we're carrying.
The more trees we have, the more pruning and things.
But I think, I think your point is well taken that even with that in the budget, sometimes tree maintenance for DPW looks like, you know, take this branch down before it kills somebody. We may want to see if there would be a way in the future to even hire a part-time arborist to work with Jay and the folks at DPW to say, okay, let's analyze which trees really need some pruning that you can't, you know, me walking around with a lopper is can't deal with.
So this will be a future budget. I know our director over there is nodding his head, and the town manager is, because of all the trees being planted, we want to make sure we have the ability to maintain them and a future maintenance plan. So thank you.
We did invest this, this year in the chipper, and so that's part of the maintenance.
Yeah, yeah, but the pruning and all that, that's, the more trees we plant, the more that line item is going to probably have to go up a little bit, so. Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions? You're good? So I will say, just based on what Kristin has talked about during the Tree Committee meetings, this caught on very quickly in Dover, correct? And do you want to speak to that just real, because I think that's fascinating and I look forward to it catching on here as well.
Yeah, so, so this approach was modeled after what was done by Stratford Regional's planning, Regional Planning Commission for the city of Dover, where volunteers, all of the data collection was volunteer-based. That's why we got to get a contract so cheap, because they could pretty much pull the information and the formatting and the settings from SRPC and use it at Rockingham Planning Commission. It's really kind of, it's almost like you have tree stewards of a street, you know? People walk down their favorite street and they're collecting data, not only on what trees are there, but empty tree wells, stumps, so that we have a sense for additional easy places that have already held a tree in the past that we can replace. The other thing that we talked about last year that I think we should touch on, and I forgot to add it in the slide, is we talked a lot about tree canopy and equity and ensuring that we do have a decent tree canopy. The Tree Committee is fabulous at scouring the, the streets of Exeter and identifying places for future plantings and do all the legwork, like, is there, are there power lines, you know? Is there a sidewalk there? How much space is, is available? And so a lot of that pre-scoping is done by volunteers of the Tree Committee. And through that effort, they identified Front Street, so pushing out our, and that's one of our equity areas, pushing out our tree plantings further down Front Street toward, toward the railroad tracks. So we're hoping to do that. And I think that once we continue to have a really robust dataset, it'll be obvious where we, where we can expand our canopy, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Two are going in right on Water Street.
Yeah, if you noticed coming in, the DPW has pulled up some bricks. Keep your eye on that spot. Two more, two trees are going to go in there. There were trees, kind of a, right outside the Seacoast Artists Association.
In front of the building that we're in.
There had been trees when they first built the building, and they died. And so they've got a new plan, a new system for being able to find trees that not only will be happy in the shade, but will survive in a new system of grates that won't kill them.
I was going to ask about the grates, because that, the trees that died there didn't have grates. Weren't they just paved right up to the tree tram?
You know, I can't honestly remember.
These will have grates, and they, they've designed them now so that they're lighter and not these big heavy rods now, so.
They have one quarter of the cost.
Yeah, much less.
So stay tuned.
They just dug up those bricks today, so you can take a look tomorrow in your wandering.
We will. Before you go, I just want to say, I have the privilege of being the select board rep to the Tree Committee, and your slides are very revealing and very telling. The first one, Sally, that you showed was monthly, and this committee meets religiously on a monthly basis, and they all attend, unless someone's away on vacation, I mean, everybody comes to these meetings, and.
And their sponsors?
They set, they set goals. Their sponsors come, DPW, either Jay or Kurt's always there. They set goals and objectives that they can achieve, and achieve they do. And the pictures in your subsequent slide showed not only the successful work that you've accomplished, but the fun that you have doing it. And I've had the opportunity to go to a couple of tree plantings. It is a lot of fun. And I'll just sum up by saying, the second Tuesday morning of every month, there's a reason I go home with a smile on my face. You guys do a great job. Thank you for what you've done for our community, and we look forward.
Thank you.
To your work in the future. Thank you.
And they always come here with a smile on their face. Did you notice that? Every time you guys come, you're all smiling and excited.
How can you not?
I know, I know.
It's trees.
And I think I did promise to put you first on the agenda a couple of months ago, but given the other side, I thought this was nice in the middle, and the pressure's really on Kate and Cory after this one, so. Thank you. So our next agenda item is we need to open a public hearing. So I would entertain a motion at this time to open the public hearing on the Comcast franchise amendment.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. I will read the notice. The Exeter Select Board hereby gives notice of a public hearing pursuant to New Hampshire RSA 53C:3A on the proposed amendment to the cable television franchise agreement between the Town of Exeter, New Hampshire and Comcast of Maine, New Hampshire Incorporated on Monday, September 16, 2024 at 7:00 PM in the Exeter Town Office's Novak Room, 10 Front Street, Exeter, New Hampshire. The proposed amendment is available for review at the town clerk's, excuse me, for review at the town clerk's office, Town Office, 10 Front Street, Exeter, New Hampshire during the hours the Town Clerk's Office is open, dated August 20, 2024. Having read that, I would ask if there are any members of the public that wish to come Our last two members of the public are leaving. Good night.
Good night.
There's nobody online. As there are no members of the public present, I would entertain a motion then to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Attorney Miller, I'll hand it over to you then.
Thank you so much. It's always a tough act to follow around here. I was here about a month ago and explained the status of the cable franchise discussions with Comcast. There's an existing cable TV franchise in Exeter, and it's up for renewal. And what we did was, rather than rewriting the entire document, was negotiate some amendments to get some sort of high priority things that the, the town cared about. Very briefly, I'll just provide a little context, as I did the last time, which is the cable industry is in a, a time of quite a bit of change, where a lot of subscribers are cutting the cords with cable and going to other types of internet streaming for their video content. So we are at a point where, as always, we don't have much competition in the cable TV business, but now we have a lot of competition from other video streaming services. So our residents have choices in terms of where they get their content, although there's only one cable TV company in the Town of Exeter. We would be happy if another cable TV company decided to come in, but so far, none have offered to do that. Eventually, we anticipate in maybe 10 years, maybe more, that the cable TV companies will shed their cable TV part of their business and just continue as internet service providers. The cable TV companies provide internet service along with their cable TV service, and I think most of them now require that you subscribe to internet service first. So they're really positioning themselves to be able to keep customers who don't want to continue with cable TV as internet service providers. So we propose extending the term of the franchise agreement out for another 10 years from where we are now, so into 2034. The reason for this, in part, is to ensure that Comcast won't walk away earlier. There are some folks that really prefer to get their video content in a more customary cable TV format. So having a, a signed contract in existence requiring that the cable company provide service in Exeter for at least those 10 years will ensure that people will continue to have service. They may come back for renewal again in 2034. On the other hand, they might say, you know, we're done, we're just going to do internet service at that point. Right now, the town is eligible for free cable service in all of its public and school buildings, so the school and municipal buildings. You don't get lots of the equipment. You just get, you know, one converter and all of those things, but it is an added benefit, especially for folks who find access to that type of news and information useful, so fire and police departments, our public schools, et cetera. We updated the, on the exhibit list that goes with the amendment, the locations, and if any of those, such as Parks and Rec, are going to move in the next few years, that their service will move with them, as long as they're in an area that's served by Comcast, which Hampton Road certainly is. The other thing that was a high priority was to get one of our channels on the local access system. We have three channels that the Town of Exeter runs, one for governmental programming, one for educational programming that's shared with all the towns in the Cooperative School District, and one for public programming. So it's a very vibrant program where members of the public can contribute video content. All of those are in an, an old format that looks not as clear and crisp as most of the other programming on cable TV. So for a long time, we've been asking for a high-definition channel. So we are finally getting one, and we will not have to lose any of the other channels. So there was, continued to be three separate channels, and then there'll be one additional channel in HD. And I'm not sure how your wonderful folks at Exeter TV are going to program that, but I think they may make it to kind of a mix of all the programming from all three channels. But they will figure that out. And they've been doing a great job in assisting with these negotiations. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell in terms of what we're doing, and I hope it's, I love seeing you, but I hope it's 10 years before I have to come back again.
Are there any questions?
No, I have none.
Any questions? Then seeing none, I would entertain a motion to execute an amendment to the cable TV franchise, which will include obtaining one HD channel for Exeter TV, and to carry the current franchise agreement for another 10 years, and to further authorize the town manager or their designee to sign the agreement.
So moved.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And our last discussion item this evening. Thank you, Kate. Good night.
Good night.
We have our finance quarterly report, which will be presented by our finance director, Mr. Corey Stevens. Good evening, Mr. Stevens.
This is not a tree presentation, unfortunately. I do recognize the hour is late, so I will try to keep it short and succinct. Thank you all for having me this evening to review the 2024 mid-year financial reports. In your packet tonight, you'll find a memo discussing the June 30 results for the general fund, water and sewer funds, along with the accompanying budget-first actual financial statements for each of the funds. I did not include an analysis of the revolving funds at mid-year. I thought I would just wait towards the end of the year. Rec is pretty quiet up through June 30 anyway.
Fair enough. Thank you.
As always, if there's any questions as we move through the presentation, please feel free to, to stop me, and unless there are any initial questions, we can sort of dive right in. Okay, starting with the general fund. Overall, our general fund operating budget for 2024 is $22.9 million. At June 30, we'd recognized $10.3 million in revenue, and we had just over $10 million in expenses. Total operating revenue as of June 30 was 45% of the overall 2024 budget, and that breaks down roughly $7 million in property taxes and $3 million from our other operating expenses, or I'm sorry, revenues such as motor vehicle and the like. Regarding property taxes, we billed $31.4 million in May, and of that, 77% was for the schools and county, and 23% was for the town, or $7.3 million. We collected 85% of those receipts as of June 30 and 97% as of July 30, which is consistent with prior year results. Regarding our other operating income, I'd just highlight a few notable results at mid-year. Our building permits fees collected at mid-year were notably less than 2023. On page one of my full memo, there's a table sort of outlining fees collected and permits issued so far. The year-over-year decline amounted to about $214,000 for the first six months. You may recall that 2023 was quite a busy year for permits, including a number of high-dollar projects. So not unexpected to see that drop a little bit this year. Secondly, would be income from departments. At mid-year, there was $167,000 less collected than at June 2023, and that's mostly one-time reimbursements we received in 2023 and some accounting adjustments we made to lines. So although it is a drop, it was more that it was elevated in the prior year. And finally, I would note our interest income results for the year, which continued to be strong for the first six months of this year. Through mid-year, we'd earned $290,000 in interest income. This is well ahead of our budget expectation in $188,000 more than mid-year 2023. We continue to take advantage of favorable interest rate climate for as long as it lasts. Let's hit on the revenue side for general fund. Flipping over now to the general fund expenses. Operating expenses through June 30 were $10 million, or 44% of the budget. And as you can see, the spending rate is quite similar to 2023 mid-year results. While our hiring efforts have continued to improve this year, wage and benefits spending continues to lag due to open positions, particularly in our DPW department. General operating expenses were more or less in line with expectation at mid-year, with a few notable exceptions that we'll talk about. In our general government group, spending was generally in line with budget expectation at 48%. Town clerk had two vacant positions for about six months, and human resources had a vacant part-time position, which was filled in mid-April, which accounted for about $8,000 of unspent wage budget. In the finance group, the group was fully staffed during the first half of 2024, and any budgetary, budget-first actual variances are really due to timing of expenditures, particularly in IT, where subscription-based costs and other hardware purchase we make happen in the second part of the year. In our planning group, the group's overall budgets were 46% spent at mid-year. The building department continues to try to hire an electrical contractor, and the vacancy, and that vacancy drove their budgetary results. Moving into public safety departments, police, the police department budget was 47% spent at mid-year. One open position in the staff division and two early on in the dispatch were the primary cause for these results. We are watching overtime budgets as we move through the year into the second half. These, several of our police force members are part of the State Emergency Response Team, CERT. They've responded to some events over the summer that will elevate those overtime budget lines eventually. Moving into fire, fire budget was also 47% spent at mid-year. Spending was essentially in line at 630. Spending was essentially in line at 630. The new fire chief is taking a fairly cautious approach to spending during his first year. Divisions were fully staffed but for one retirement in suppression in late spring. And then just regarding quickly, the EMS revolving fund at June 30, there was ambulance revenue of $390,000 and expenses of $233, so a net income of around $157,000. Moving into DPW. Mid-year spending rate for the department was fairly consistent with FY '23 at 33%. While we were successful in hiring a new DPW director and a GIS coordinator this year, many positions remain open for which the new director is actively trying to hire. As is historically the case, general expense spending lagged behind budget expectation at mid-year. Notable general expense results in highway, much of the paving budget was not spent as of mid-year. We had enclosures shortly after mid-year, so the budget will get spent, but just tend at mid-year. Our snow removal budget was 79% spent at June 30, and this compared to 113%, so over-budget in 2023. And then general maintenance, our project list budget, our $100,000 sort of annual project list budget, was 25% spent at mid-year, but talking with the DPW director, there are plans, of course, for that budget. Moving into welfare and human services.
Can I -- one question, and I think, Melissa, that might be one for you. Approximately, how many openings do we have presently in Public Works, to the best of your knowledge?
Give me two minutes and I'll answer you.
Fair enough.
I'm doing the org chart in my head.
Okay.
Last time we were talking, I had the number nine in my head, but it could be.
It seems like we're stuck at that nine number, right?
No, because we keep missing.
So it's a significant --
It's significant, but we made two offers this week.
Fair enough, okay.
Well, potentially two offers, so I will say that Steve is working really hard and they're chipping away at it.
Good, okay.
Making progress, even if just.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
That's okay, no. So welfare and human services, as you know, we hired a new welfare and human services administrator in June of this year. As a result, the wage and benefits lines were largely -- or they were unspent as of mid-year. Our direct relief lines, on the other hand, were up roughly $7,000 over mid-year 2023. In human services, you'll notice there was 100% of the budget spent as of mid-year versus 33% in the prior. We made contributions to our service organizations in one-time payments this year before the first -- before the mid of the year, as opposed to doing on a quarterly basis, which we've done in the past. In parks and recs, spending on wage and benefits were largely in line at mid-year. Parks continues to work with a small labor force and therefore relies pretty heavily on contracted services to help maintain Exeter's parks. The contracted services budget line was 60% spent at mid-year. In library, library budget was 57% spent at mid-year compared to 50% in the prior year. The library had requested accelerated payment on their library services line this year. We had paid out 100% of that line as of June 30. Historically, we make those payments at least twice or in installments that go throughout the year. So lots of timing issues in here. And then finally, just wrapping up, general fund, looking at debt service. Our debt service budget for '24 is an overall increase of $572,000 for 20 -- from 2023. New debt related to the Westside Drive infrastructure project and the solar array. The new debt was offset by about $60,000 in retiring issues, and debt as a percentage of the overall general fund budget will increase from 7% in 2023 to 9% in 2024.
Do -- back to parks and rec, do we have the robots yet?
Yes.
And are we realizing savings in contracted service, or is it too early to tell?
I would say it's too early to tell.
Fair enough, thank you, okay.
They're working.
They're definitely out there.
They're definitely out there working, and they're making some money, but I think it's pretty quick.
Good, okay, thank you.
I only know because of my meetings with the park advisory board.
Any other questions before we move out of general fund and into water and sewer enterprise? Water, overall, this year's water fund budget was $4.96 million, or an increase of 9% over 2023. Mid-year revenue collected was 45% of budget, while mid-year expenses were 34% of budget expectation. You'll recall that water rates were increased by 15% on January 1 of this year as a result of last year's rate study and upon recommendation by the Water Sewer Advisory Committee. Total operating revenue collected as of June 30 was $299,000 more than 2023, about a 15% increase. Interestingly, though, as we look at water usage, consumption has dropped by 2.6% year-over-year for the first six months. This is a trend that we talked about when I gave my year-end report for 2023, this sort of decline in usage. On the expense side of the water operations, as I mentioned, overall expenses at mid-year were 34% of the operating budget compared to 46% in 2023. At first glance, this appears to be a fairly significant drop in spending. However, if you refer to the budget versus actual financials, you'll see under capital outlay that in 2023, we had essentially spent our capital outlay budget by mid-year. This year, we've barely eaten into it. There are plans, they're underway, it's just we haven't spent that money at this point, or we haven't spent that budget. So that's largely driving the variance from year to year in spending in the water budget. On the labor front, water and sewer continue to struggle attracting candidates for open positions, including an assistant manager position, as well as other shared positions between the two departments. As you may recall from past discussions, our debt service largely is paid in the second half of the year. That's why spending there looks somewhat anemic as well. The fund ended the first six months with a $550,000 net surface -- I'm sorry, net surplus, mostly as a result of our capital outlay, our debt service payments, and the vacant positions during the period. And then finally, wrapping up with sewer funds. This year's sewer fund budget was $7.5 million, which is less than a percent increase over the 2023 budget. Mid-year revenue collected was 47% of budget, and mid-year expenses were 19% of budget. Similar to water, sewer rates were increased by 4% in January of this year as a result of the rate study. Total operating revenue for sewer -- total operating revenue collected as of June 30 was $110,000 more than '23, or a 3% increase there. Sewer collection actually dropped by 2.1%, or 3.25 million gallons, so sort of in line with what's going on in water as well. And then finally, the town does expect to receive its large grant towards our sewer debt service from the state, our state aid grant. This year's will be just over $1 million, and will represent about a $15,000 decrease from the prior year. On the expense side of sewer, operating expenses at mid-year were 19% of the operating budget for 2024. The spend rate is in line with historical and is low due to the timing of our debt service payment, particularly on our wastewater treatment plan. Sewer operations share many of the same staff with water, as I mentioned before, therefore budget results, budget versus actual results really pertain to the openings we have in General fund -- I'm sorry, general sewer expenses, nothing notable that wouldn't be explained by timing differences in spending. As is the case each year, sewer operations was running a healthy net surplus as of mid-year, and this is in preparation for our large debt service payment in December. And then finally, just wrapping up with water sewer receivables, our receivables were roughly $1.2 million as of June 30. This was a $90,000 improvement over December 31 of this year, but such a small variance would likely be due to timing of payments by residents. I had a couple other graphs in there or charts related to property tax receivables as well that are fairly self-explanatory, nothing big there. And that kind of concludes the presentation.
Fantastic. Any questions for Mr. Stevens?
I have none.
Very thorough. It was very thorough. I have one question, and I think it's to you. And if you don't have the answer now, that's fine. What do we have left in ARPA funds that have not been earmarked for anything?
Yep.
And while you look that up, am I correct that we need to -- we have until the end of this year to sort of at least indicate how we're going to spend them?
To commit them.
To obligates.
That's the word, thank you.
To have a contract or a requirement to make a payment. Right, so we have available funds of $42,000. We committed $12,000 towards some design work in Swayze Park, brings it down to around $30,000. There are a couple of projects outstanding for which I do not have obligations towards that December 30 deadline, so those are still being -- departments are working on those, and then there may be another $5,000 or $6,000 that would come back to, you know, the available bucket. So we could be looking anywhere from 30,000 to 36,000.
Okay, good, thank you. So I guess I would say to the three of you, town manager, assistant town manager, and you, let's make sure we're obligating all that money so we don't lose it.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Good, okay.
Fair enough.
Thank you, and not waiting till the last minute.
Yes.
We don't like that here.
It is hot on the radar, for sure, yeah.
Awesome, okay, thank you very much.
Great, well, thank you all again.
Thank you for the hard work that you put into this, and I know you've been knee-deep in budget season with Russ and Melissa and the department heads, so, you know, your activity and the hard work that you've been putting in is recognized. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving into regular business, Mr. Dean, under abatements, we have one community action report.
Yes, this is actually from the New Hampshire DRA. It's a form that they fill out when they come and observe our revaluation process.
Okay.
So this is just a document that that has occurred and is in line with their expectation.
Do we need to take any action with this?
You do not.
Okay.
Yeah?
Yes.
All right.
DRA.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. We have several permits and approvals. One was added as a supplement to our packet this afternoon, and if the board will indulge me, I'm going to do that one first so I don't forget about it. This is from the Exeter Area General Federation of Women's Clubs that is looking to post signs, small frame lawn signs measuring 21 by 18 inches that would be placed along the road sides in the Exeter area. And then they're looking for a larger sign on the corner of Guinea and Hampton Roads, respectively for the same dates, which was November 17th and 24th. And this is to advertise the club's Yuletide Fair that is held at Stratum Cooperative Middle School on Saturday, November 23, 2024, which is going to mark their 45th year that the organization has held this event.
Wow.
Is this the same request as previous years?
Correct. So if there are no questions, then I would entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Area General Federation of Women's Clubs' request to place small 21 by 18-inch signs along the road sides in the Exeter area, as well as a larger sign at the corner of Guinea Road and Hampton Road between the dates of November 17 and November 24, 2024, advertising the Women's Clubs' Yuletide Fair held at Stratum CMS on Saturday, November 23, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. I want to make sure I got everything.
Yeah, it's quite a motion.
The next one is for ADA-compliant curb ramps. It's a request from our Public Works Director, Stephen Cronin. It's pretty self-explanatory, but Mr. Dean, did you want to speak to this briefly?
Just that this is part of our ADA compliance program that we've been engaged in, and it's a nice project out at the library, and it's going to involve the installation of curb cuts and concrete ramps. There'll be truncated domes and pavement transitions, and Bell and Flynn gave us the quote on this of $13,740, and we thought that that was in order, given the scope of work.
And this is to be spent out of the ADA Capital Reserve Fund?
That's correct.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to authorize the withdrawal of $13,740 from the ADA Capital Reserve Fund for the installation of ADA-compliant curb ramps at the Exeter Public Library driveway on String Bridge.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close, motion carries, thank you. And the last is the request for the overnight parking permits on Pleasant Street. Mr. Dean, do you want to speak to this briefly?
Sure, this is an amendment to the form that we're using for winter parking permits. What this will allow folks to do is they'll be allowed to register different vehicles under the same permit, but there'll only be one permit per vehicle. So it just opens it up a little bit, but not for multiple permits, if that makes sense.
No.
No.
Sorry. It didn't make sense when I was reading it. It's like it says only one car per automobile per applicant, and then we show three spaces for them.
Right, there's one applicant, and then it's going to have multiple vehicles that go with that applicant.
So how does the sticker work? Is it a card?
They'd actually move the permit around from car to car.
Yeah, what is -- I don't know what the current is. So this is a change.
Right.
We added extra lines.
Right.
Is there a reason why we're doing this?
We have had situations where people have come in with multiple vehicles that would like to -- one would be away from town, and one would be here, and they would actually like to be able to switch the permit and still only park the one vehicle, but permit be -- having one vehicle still be the one that's permitted to park.
And just to be clear, this is on Pleasant Street, which is the extension of Chestnut Street across from the library.
Correct.
Right? They're by the library.
Right.
And there's lots of multi-unit housing there.
That's correct.
Two or three.
Yeah.
To be exact.
Yeah.
And so these folks are looking to be permitted for on-street parking because they don't have enough parking.
Yeah, and we're still going to limit the amount of permits that are issued. It's just, like I said, we're going to allow more than one vehicle to go with one permit. So they would have to move the permit from vehicle to vehicle in order to make the system work.
And we'll have a record of what the vehicles are.
We will.
Attached to that permit.
Yes.
So there's still.
That's what the form amendment is for.
There's eight spaces still.
That's correct.
First come, first served.
Yes.
One applicant per space.
One applicant per space.
Right.
Correct.
And they'll be able to move that permit to three different vehicles.
Right.
But only one at a time.
That's correct.
So the individual with three vehicles will only have one vehicle parked at one time on Pleasant Street?
That's correct. That's correct.
And the police department is cool with this, not that they monitor.
Yeah, the police department has signed off on this as being okay.
So it's not like a sticker, it's an actual?
It could be a placard instead.
Yeah, I mean, can you -- how have we typically issued them?
It would be like a placard-type instrument.
But right now, we're using stickers?
Right.
I mean, I'm willing to -- I'm willing to vote yes, but if they muck around with it?
We'll be back.
Yanking it, yeah.
Towing away.
It's not something we want to see abused.
Because the whole idea Because the whole idea of a sticker is the stickers on the car.
Right.
It can't be transferred.
Your permit is your permit.
But what Mr. Dean is presenting is that having two vehicles but one sticker can be problematic for somebody that needs to switch cars.
But a placard could also be copied.
I don't understand why there'd be three. I think.
Well, some people have two kids.
Oh, no, 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 I, I, no, I get it. I'm, I'm going by with, with Mr., what Mr. Shartrin said, you know, if there's.
Could work.
It could work.
If it doesn't work.
Yeah.
We're yanking it.
But we don't have any parking enforcement mechanisms.
Well, I think it would probably, I'm envisioning, and I don't know if this is where you're going, but envisioning, you know, complaints coming to the town manager's office of multi-perm.
Times being dropped.
I, I, I just, okay.
Let's give it a try. That would be my take on it. Let's give it a try.
Any other thoughts?
It's going to be one of the rear mirror, hanging placards like for handicap parking space?
Have you, have you investigated the placard? Like, how's it gonna, do we have them?
I, I have not. So do you want to hold and have me bring this back?
The board mind of Mr. Dean just maybe came back September thirtieth. I mean, is it time?
I would be fine with that.
Yeah.
Time of the essence here?
You have a lot on that agenda.
It's just one, it's just going to be answering some questions?
Yes.
Does that work for the board, or?
Sure.
Unless you'd like to make a motion?
No, I'm good.
All right.
It's a good, good idea.
I think that was it for permits?
Yes.
Okay. Town manager's report is next, and I have a request. If you could incorporate, there's two pieces of correspondence, just for the sake of continuity for the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
There's some correspondence on coast, and there's some correspondence on Triple E and the mosquitoes. If you could combine those into your town manager's report, because I was going to ask you to speak to those anyway, and then that way, when we get to correspondence, you've already addressed it.
Sure.
Thank you.
So I'll start with the coast applications and task, and also the Rockyham County Meals on Wheels Transportation Funding Applications. So those are part of your packet tonight. They don't really typically have a home as far as evaluating those requests, so that's why they're before the board. We are evaluating those at E-Team, and we'll be bringing some recommendations forward to you as far as funding goes.
Okay.
For that. So that is what that is about. And Triple E, the Triple E, we've begun adultaciding in town, and we are definitely paying attention to the Triple E threat. As you know, there's been a lot of conversations about what's happening out there, and we're continuing on with that. So that is the Triple E report. Any questions about that?
No, but I would like to compliment and recognize Madison Bailey, our health officer, who's done an exceptional job of keeping everybody notified of the high risk and all of the work that's being done. So I really would like to recognize her, as well as Exeter TV, for their work in communicating the high risk and all of Madison's suggestions to the public. So kudos to Madison and Exeter TV.
Thank you. So the other issue I wanted to report on was with the Exeter Public Library. They had an issue with their wall over at the library site, and that wall repair costs thirty thousand dollars in order to fix. And I had a meeting with the library director about, it was about a month ago, talking about potential funding options to help out with that. The library is experiencing some financial issues with their budget this year, it looks like, because of this wall issue, that they may be over their budget for the year. So they've come to me and asked me for some assistance in funding a portion of the wall, which would help them in their overall budget scenario. So I wanted to let the board know and, and make you aware of that before we went too much further in the process. And this Wednesday, the chair, myself, the, the E-Team, we have a meeting with the Hope, with Hope and Kathy Corson, the Chair of the Library Trustees, to sort out some of the issues around this particular issue.
What about their insurance?
My understanding is that they checked in insurance, this wasn't an insurable expense that was deemed to be regular wear and tear by Primex. So, so that's where we are with that.
Can, can you just speak to how that would work and the authority that you have as town manager, and what role the select board would play if and when it's decided to, for lack of a better word, bail them out?
So the proposal that I got from the library was to maybe take fifteen thousand dollars from the maintenance projects budget, which I could authorize as town manager to, to spend that money. But I probably would not want to do that without coming back to the board and, and getting your, getting your take and your permission to do that. So that's where the money would come from if it was going to come out of the town's budget.
And what would not get done because that was taken from there?
It would be fifteen thousand dollars worth of maintenance projects in the maintenance projects budget.
And is the library typically responsible for their own maintenance?
They, they typically are, yes.
But this is something that was not expected?
It was an unexpected emergency repair that they had to do.
And this was not part of the renovation that happened a few years ago?
It was not, no.
Was it an interior wall, exterior?
Exterior.
And it was not part of what was renovated?
It, no, it was not part of what was renovated.
Which wall is it?
It's a granite wall along the outside, next to the parking lot.
So it's on the parking lot side?
Yes.
Okay. So can I ask another? Are you okay? I didn't want to interrupt you.
No, no, have at it.
What's, what's the, I'd like to know the consequence of deferring this until their budget kicks back in next year?
That's a good question.
Yeah, the consequence of deferring it, as it's been explained to me by the library, is that they would have to, if they needed to continue to fund this on their own, they would, they would be over budget, and therefore they would have to shut down services at the library later in the year.
No, they, no, deferring the maintenance until?
No, it's already done. Project's done.
They came to us after the fact.
They came to us.
Oh.
Wait, they did the job.
Oh, no, no, no.
Yeah.
That's not.
So here's, here's an idea. We're happy to help, but that's not the right way to do this.
No.
They should have come to us before they did the fix, in the future.
I, I wouldn't disagree with that.
So, so maybe some, as part of the quid pro quo for this, some different rules for the road going forward?
Mm-hmm.
With a clear understanding.
So I'm very upset by this, and that's why I asked Mr. Dean to include that in the town manager's report. As he alluded to, we, we have been requesting a meeting with the trustees, or at least the Chair of the trustees, for quite some time now, and we are finally going to meet with the audience, as Mr. Dean described, in two days. I agree with everything that you just said, and I'm incredibly upset that, that they've come to us after the fact with, with the.
Expectation.
With the expectation and the, I have to want to choose my words carefully.
Yeah.
We promised that it could affect library services by the end of the year, which I, I'm not happy about.
This is.
But, but I would, I would like to give the benefit of the doubt to the trustees and hear their side of the story, because to date, and please correct me if I'm wrong, you've only spoken with the library director.
That's true. To date, the library director and I have been the ones who have spoken about this.
I'd like to hear what the trustees knew when they knew it and all of that. Before.
That's all sensible.
Before I.
Yeah.
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 So would the board, is the board inclined to maybe suggest to Mr. Dean that we hold off doing anything until we have this meeting Wednesday, we can come back to this report on the thirtieth?
Yeah.
And report back?
Yeah, and could I ask one question?
Of course.
That you could maybe touch on. So we, as a board, don't have any say really in the budget that, for the library. So I would kind of like to know what they do about setting aside money for emergency funds, and if maybe they've already used that. Maybe they do do that, I don't know, but.
There's a lot, that's why I'm saying.
Yeah, I, I.
It would be healthy to have all the interested parties in the same room at the same time, I think, so.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
And I'm appreciative, and I, and I, I am irritated, so I apologize for that, but I'm appreciative of Chair Corson making herself available to have this meeting. And I did have a very quick phone conversation with her last week, so that's why I'd like, I'd like the opportunity to hear from the trustees themselves, rather than just from the library director, if that makes sense.
That is right on target, because that's the governance. The trustees are the governance of the library. And if they were included in this, well, then there's a different set of issues to address. But if they were not informed of this, then we have a governance issue.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll come back to the board on the thirtieth?
Very good.
I'm sorry, did you talk about coast?
I did.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, the three transportation funding applications are in the packet.
That's right, that's right. Okay.
We're reviewing those, and we'll have a recommendation for you as far as funding those go.
And, and just to finish, there is no bigger supporter of the library than myself. I see them as a complementary institution to the business I run. They, we work hand in hand with them, but issues of governance upset me greatly when they're not done correctly and transparently. So.
Agreed.
I love the library, though. Don't get me wrong.
You got anything else, or is that it?
I think that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Thanks.
Select Board Committee reports. Selectwoman Valen, please.
I had a planning board meeting on September twelfth. Fifty Linden Street had three residential condo units that were approved, and it was, as in a butter, I should say. And that was approved. That was sixteen, one, six, five, eight, and Kingston Road. It was a subdivision, so that was approved. And then the rugs property came to the planning board. I will say, we don't have to give a reason for recusal. I gave, I recuse myself, and I will be recusing myself for anything to do with the planning board and rug in case it becomes a board issue. But they did just do a review. There were no votes, there were no questions, there was no public comment. And if anyone in the public is interested in looking at the plans that were presented, they are available under the September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four Planning Board Packet. We had a Housing Advisory Committee meeting on September thirteenth, last Friday. We tabled a few discussions because Dave Sharple's was away, our town planner. So we did not talk about short-term rental. We did not talk about seventy-nine E. What we did discuss was a project that's going on in Dover that I was able to get to, but was late getting there and had to leave early. But it's about, it, it, they use transfer development rights. And the developer, who, again, very briefly, heard him speak, but he was all about the project and not so much top-of-the-line, what's the word, return. He, he, pardon me?
Return on investment.
Yes, he, he's looking for the return later out because he's trying to develop a need. I mean, he, he's looking for profit, but it's not as big as some of these other things. So anyway, he has agreed to come visit us and talk with us at the Housing Advisor, our next one. So we've moved August, this is September, October eleventh meeting to October twenty-fifth, to accommodate his schedule. So I'm really excited about that. It's always, pardon me?
Send me that.
I will. And public, of course, if you want to come. It's always exciting to hear new ways of finding attainable housing. And finally, I saw this, I just want to remind everyone, Exeter Senior Council, they're doing a resource fair from ten to noon on October twenty-second. It's a Tuesday, and it is being sponsored by The Langton Place. So it's seventeen Hampton Road, that's not a tight bell. It is literally seventeen Hampton Road, not ten Hampton Road. So I wanted to make sure we got that out there. And I think that will do it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Selectwoman Gilman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All I had was a energy committee meeting, and in our correspondence are a couple pieces to, for information. Wanted, we, all we talked about was promoting our different things. One is the Exeter Electric Vehicle Car Expo, which happens right out here in front of the town hall and the bandstand, and that is Sunday, September twenty-ninth, from eleven to two-thirty. And folks who have, this mostly covers fully electric vehicles, not hybrids. But if you have a hybrid and you want to show it off, come on down anyway. But there will be dealerships with, possibly doing test drives. It's really up to them. I know a couple of them will do test drives. They don't want me test-driving their car. And then there'll be folks that, from around the area, that have electric vehicles themselves that will, that like to show them off, but probably won't let you drive them. So that's September twenty-ninth, from eleven to two-thirty. And then in the packet also is the latest, a reminder of the opt-up competition that we're in and what the prices are right now. If you want to opt up, and I just want to plug, you know, going one step up is still less expensive than unitile, but it's also less, as, less than expensive than it was the last six months that we had set a rate. So it's still attractive, and Portsmouth is beating us. So, you know, let's get together. And then the last thing is the program called Window Dressers that I talked about before, and we're getting ready to push it out or actually do it in January. So calling all volunteers again, there were three groups, there are three things that we need volunteer help with, and one is going to the houses of the people that are asking for the windows just to do measurements of the windows, so that the, the window dressing will fit inside the frame. And the second one is for people to come in January and actually build the units. We've selected the town hall, we've been promised it won't do any damage to the floors or anything like that. But all of this is not, is easy, and you'll be trained what to do. And the third volunteer thing we have is to wrangle volunteers. So that's about it.
Great, thank you.
Oh, one more.
I'm sorry.
You know, one more thing, I forgot. The Heritage Commission's Demolition Review Committee is looking at a, a house at one, one-twelve Front Street that's proposed to be demolished along with the barn, and that is Wednesday, next Wednesday, I believe, at ten AM on-site. And, you know, well, I'm not going to say what my opinion is yet, until I see the inside of it.
Thank you. Selectwoman Cowan?
Yes, I had a water and sewer advisory committee meeting on the eleventh, where we took up six abatement requests and had a really positive, great meeting where we helped our residents. This is a shout-out to Bob Kelly for all the work that he does for our town.
Great.
I was not notified of that. It must not be on the distribution list.
Oh, that's right, because we're, we're splitting it.
No, we're both, we're both on it now.
Yes.
So, Mr. Dean, could I be added to the water and sewer advisory committee?
Yes.
On the petition list?
Absolutely.
Per the voters' vote?
Yes.
Thank you. And thank you for reporting. I wasn't being informed.
We are, our next meeting is, I think it's December eleventh.
Okay, that's on my calendar. Thank you.
Yes, it is December eleventh.
Thank you, Selectwoman Cowan.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Selectwoman Shartrin, yeah, obviously there's one less meeting to report on.
I did have a Conservation Commission meeting last Tuesday night, but I prioritized working at the polls over attending that meeting, so I have no report.
Thank you. And I, the same, the Tree Committee met last Tuesday, but it was to prepare for their presentation this evening, so they said it better than I ever could. I do have a busy week. This week, Swayze Park Prestige, there's going to be a sit walk. Their meeting will be a sit walk at five PM on Wednesday at, at the Parkway. And we have River Advisory Thursday, followed by Pearpoint Park Committee. So we'll have lots to report on the thirtieth.
Can I add something?
Sure. Sure.
So I want to encourage people to listen and watch our bi-weekly reports, and if you missed Fridays, please go look, because you'll get introduced to Olivia, Bob Gluapi's little baby girl, our media coordinator, participated with Olivia. I won't give away anything, but there are a few little snippets, and stay till the end.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondence between Selectwoman Gilman and Mr. Dean, they've taken care of all that, except for the NHMA Legislative Bulletin.
I would really urge people to take a look at that. That report.
So reviewing the board calendar, let's, we'll just go over the dates we've already set. September 30th, October 15th, October 28th, November 12th, November 25th, December 9th, and December 23rd. And the BRC kickoff budget will be October 2nd. Any questions? With that, I would entertain a motion to enter into non-public under RSA 91A 32A.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in the second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please.
Selectwoman Chartran?
Hi.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
And the clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passes 5-0, the board will be going into non-public. Thank you, everyone. Who gets this?
I'll take it.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I don't mind.
Like pass the turkey.
It is. I, I cannot. I've been looking for, I can't find the piece of paper that was in our box about the time. It's not that big of a deal, because we voted on, and I just know.
It's getting bad.
I'm getting better, but not every piece of paper, I'm holding on.
I pushed it today.
Six months, I guess.
Did it three months.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.